Meeting my boss tomorrow night, of course, so I have our first work. We're doing an agenda under all the settings I want to come up about.
Order. If we'll start with. Please. If no, stand for flag lagers. I pledge allegiance to the.
Saying something. Probably for a moment just saying names. One nation. It is well, the democracy and.
For those in the gallery, if you have a cell phone with you, can you please make sure that it's either off or on silence? Councilmember, please make sure yours are off the desktop. So you click mingle, you'll take roll call for us, please.
Councilmember Williams.
President.
Ray here.
Jackson.
Here.
Waller.
Here.
Dana.
Present.
Brunch.
Here.
And Airstrang.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda?
Support.
Any additions, deletions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Alright, so this evening, we'll start off with a few presentations. First, we will have individuals with our Habitat for Humanity.
It'll go around, it'll make it spin around.
Well, thanks for having us. I'm Robert Phillips, the executive director for Habitat for Humanity, and this is Scotty, our board president. So going around is our annual report. Covers the period from July of 2021 through June of 2022, and we'll just briefly go over that. On what we've done in the past twelve months and what we're looking to do in the future. So the homeownership page, if you flip it open, that's what most, most people are familiar with when they think of Habitat. When a prospective homeowner comes through our doors, they. They're usually in need of a home, get out of the situation that they're living in now. They fill out a brief application to our state support office. Where they get mortgage ready, because Habitat homeowners do have a mortgage at the end of the day. And that can take some time, six months to two years, but usually it's essentially. Whatever it is, when they walk through the door up to somewhere around seven hundred. And they. Get the perfect score. They are referred to back to us as how they term it. We then evaluate the situation that they're living in, and we ask them if they're willing to partner, which means that they are. Required to put in two hundred hours of their own time. On any Habitat project or volunteering for Habitat in general. And then our volunteers match that two hundred for a total of four hundred hours, so. It's just, they have some, obviously some sweat in the game. Rather than just getting a house with a very low percentage mortgage. And very low, it's usually zero. That's one way that. Our homeowners get after generational poverty, there's benefits for the kids from typically the education. Grades go up and it's all benefits. And obviously it's stability, sometimes for the first time in their lives. We started a new program about a year and a half ago, critical home repairs. This program is. And we work all throughout the county. I should start with that. It says Battle Creek area Habitat for Humanity, but we work all throughout the county. On the front page in the lower left was our first project. Vicki, she was a army or air force veteran and BCP for a while. She called us and said she needed her roof, and we know her for a while, we're working with her on other projects, but. So what happens when a critical repair comes to us? Again, we fill out a brief application. And then we send it up to our state support office in Lansing again, and they work with MISTHA to approve the project. Once it's approved, we come back and then get some bids and hire local contractors. This is a work that we do ourselves, we contracted out. And then they get the project done, and Mr. reimburses us, and we go from there. So we have anywhere from twelve to fifteen projects going on at any one time and various stages of that. It takes three. I'd say three to five months to get any one of these projects done, just because there's so much back and forth. But you've got a critical repair, you see there is Erie Street right around the corner, that was our third repair. He's a veteran, Navy veteran. And he came to us, just said he needs to. So. Once they complete the application and initial gets approved by MISTHA, we go, we send an assessor out there, an independent assessor, and they go through the whole. Give us a list of critical repairs, not so critical, and don't worry about it type things. But we get like a twenty pages report, then that's what, that's our scope of work. And so we went through the Washington tells here and. Let me back up a minute. There's actually two pots of money. There's MISTHA for those of us who aren't veterans, and then there's MISTHA for veterans, and then some pots of money on top of that. With the MISTHA. Or non-veterans usually get a roof and then you're done, but when, when we get a veteran. Application. The possibilities almost seem endless, because then we can bring in Home Depot, we can bring in Air National Guard and all kinds of other funding sources. So the Washington's at the end of the day, got a new roof, they got a new furnace. When we first showed up, they had some octopus looking thing, it was took up the whole basement. Couldn't believe it when I saw it, I'd never seen anything like it, but now they have a nice little shiny furnace that's about the size of this podium. They have all this extra room in the basement. So we actually put in about thirty-five thousand dollars into that house, and now. Not livable, I mean, they're the greatest people you could meet. She always had baked goods for us when we came, so. So this program is not something we even market. We started it just because the demand was there. Homeowners have to have. They have to be the homeowner, they have to have insurance for the veterans, they have to have the DD two fourteen, which is their honorable discharge. And then we go from there. As we were collecting names for this program, also collecting. All the information put on the spreadsheet. We've been for the last six months and we're. It's, we're so backed up that we're not even going to put on names, but we decided to kind of go up on a tangent, and we had so many calls about Albion roofs that we started writing down the names. And we've pulled our first permit, we're in the process of doing that now. For an Albion roof, we're not going to run it through MISTHA, because United Way gave us some funds for a couple roofs here. When we get outside sourcing, outside funding sources, we can. Do the rough as soon as we can get to it. With MISTHA, who knows, it's. So we had at least twelve, I'd say maybe in fifteen roofs now here in Albion, some of them are extremely critical, like the one we're going to start. Here, hopefully this week or next week, I'm not so sure, that's a construction manager's decision. But then we have another one that's just right around the corner from that house that we need to do, it's just as bad, I was in there the other day and the plaster and everything's coming off the. Ceilings in certain spots, so we need to get that one done. So yeah, if you. Know of any outside funding sources that don't come necessarily through the government that we can use. N S G's roofs as soon as we can, please reach out to us. Next page, wheelchair ramps, we've been doing for about five years, we do thirty to forty every year, all over the county. We put the ramp on. Book. Bookstore?
Sterling.
Sterling, yeah. Number you go through funding from the Women's Film Department group here. We put the ramp on the fire hub, I don't know what that's used for now, but. And then. Pretty good chance if you're driving around town, you see a wheelchair ramp on a house, it's probably, we probably put it there. And then we have many sources of funding for wheelchair ramps, so if you know anyone, give us a call. We like doing our volunteer building the ramps. We also have a couple of community events that we do each year, one's Rock the Black where we just go clean up neighborhood, and maybe do some small projects, plant some flowers, and. It's as big as we can get volunteers, so if we add on volunteers, we get, it'd be huge. We are going to do one here in the fall, we're going to do. Our, we're going to do one in Battle Creek on April fifteenth, and then we're talking about doing one here in the fall. So if anybody's interested in doing that, then again, give us a call.
There's connections with service groups or Boy Scouts, this isn't, this isn't the hard stuff. This is picking up sticks, it's maybe, you know, painting the, the handrail around the porch, it is all the easy stuff, it is. You know, filling holes. Whatever, but if someone, there's a service group out there, which I'm sure plenty of students have, you know, service requirements, college students probably have service requirements. Whether they're at Albion College or ACC or JCC. That's an easy one, and it's six hours, and I believe that it's almost halfway to whatever their hours are. You know, usually it's right around fifteen, so.
Yeah, if we get a few dozen people here in the fall to do Rock the Black, I think it would be a pretty successful event. The second annual event we have is Women Build, that used to be sponsored by Lowe's all over the world, for some reason, they kind of backed out of it this past year, and but we kept it going. So twenty twenty was COVID, right? So March of twenty twenty, we started a house over here on Pirpenine Street. It was the second week of March, and we had groups from all over, including Homestead Bank and the Andersons, and. Four days of fun demoing the house over there, and we get done Saturday, and I think by next Tuesday is when everything started shutting down, so we started Women Build. We just closed down that house not about a year ago. And we've been looking for houses ever since, but we'll get. We'll get to that here in a minute. And what I started about four years ago, and one of my priorities was certainly serving veterans, and I mentioned how we do that with. So that House Center Penning was for a veteran, and we do the critical home repairs. And we also, just before Veterans Day, every year we. Collect homeless veteran supplies at our restore in Battle Creek, and fill up our hole. Conference room, and then we pack them up individually in backpacks or sacks or something, and take them to the local shelters that serve veterans. And this year we added a transitional house that is somehow affiliated with the VA hospital. So we're always looking to grow that as well. We get food from the land, Food Bank, and then most of it's just local donations, we put a box of fires. Or a door at the restore, and people just walk in and whatever, whatever they have, whatever they donate in the box. And then there's the restore, very important aspect of Habitat as it provides unrestricted funds. To pay the bills, the staff, and all that. So if you're buying a new couch, don't sell the old one on Facebook, get with Habitat. Then on the back, I think is all the. Well, I'm skipping the page. Volunteers, without volunteers, we don't exist. We get twelve to fifteen thousand volunteers, volunteer hours per year. Through the restore and through construction, takes about four thousand hours of volunteer labor to rehab a house. Or currently rehab an house in the Washington Heights District of Battle Creek, about halfway through, I'd say.
Yeah, we're a little over half.
Almost two hundred thousand dollars of goods donated to the restore. We closed down the House Center Penning and a couple other in Battle Creek recently. And that fourteen. Wheelchair ramps completed there, that number's way up in the last six to eight months. We get a lot of support from credit unions, and in the back, it's just. A little bit of the. Support we get from around the community, without that support, none, we wouldn't be here. And so, yeah, I mentioned we're going to do a roof over in Pirpenine, you want to? Have something before the big news?
No, well, I just wanted to touch base with the need for volunteers from within the community. A lot of our volunteers are, I've probably talked to a number of people on the council about this before, but to get it to everyone. A number of our volunteers live on the other side of Battle Creek, and so. You know. Each community, if it wants. A bigger impact, needs to have hands to make that impact, and so, again, as far as the rock block situation, a lot of the stuff we do. Doesn't take technical know-how. Anything we're doing, whether it's a house, a ramp. The, the construction manager and our. Our junior construction manager, they've got it, they've got everything down to a science, they spell it out real, you know, easy. If you can operate a shovel, and I say this all the time in half, in half jest, if you can operate a shovel, you can volunteer at Habitat, it is not hard. It just takes the commitment of coming in, you don't have to come every weekend, people do get that confused as well, well, I'm on the hook for, you know, for what now, every Saturday? No, you are not. You can come once a month, you can come once every six months, you can come every weekend. You can take vacation off your job if you want to, and come three days a week. I do it a lot, but you know, it is just how much impact you want to make in your community, and. You know, what you want to see your community look like, this is a, this is one vehicle within the community that. Will move that forward, so mission moves forward when there's many hands, so.
Councilman Frank?
I'm sure you've been told this before. The Albion College Student Athlete Advisory Council. Has a hundred and twenty volunteers that are always looking for projects, every sports team is required to do community service. Often they do that by way of participating in local sports camps that they put on, which is easy volunteering. But I do know in my former career at the college, that there are lots and lots of students who, when they were in high school, back home, wherever they're from, did Habitat volunteering, so. I will work to get you connected to those volunteer organizations on campus, because, you know, they. Twenty years ago, when I was a professor there, we used Habitat, when Habitat was in Albion, it was no difficulty getting a hundred volunteers from the college to help out with whatever project was going on, and it's just a matter of. Reigniting those interests and those connections, so.
So that's a good segue into one of my final announcements, is that there was a college chapter here for, well, until COVID, and then proof disappeared. Understandably, but we do have that, a person, a student. Willing and excited to restart that chapter, who will take all. That'll be your primary job is finding the volunteers and fundraising for these local projects, like Rock the Black will probably need a five hundred dollar dumpster somewhere, and so they can have their own. Fundraisers and gather their own volunteers and. And my final announcement is that about a month ago, we signed a memorandum of agreement with Star Commonwealth. They are submitting a grant today for a program that's called Youth Build, which has been around Habitat forever, but if they get the grant, then they will have a program. For students there that are learning, are willing to learn a trade. And Marshall Public Schools, this is a verbal agreement, is willing to provide the land, which would be to the east of the Opportunity High School on the north side of Watson, is what we're looking at now. So maybe this fall, we are breaking ground on new houses here in Albion. And those will be funded through the USDA World Development Program, which is somewhere around a one to three percent loan for the homeowners, but it will be targeted for low income. We will have the kids learning the skill. And I call them kids, but they're eighteen to twenty-two, I think. So if all goes well, there's, you probably know who's in charge, but he's very driven and very intelligent person, I think we're going to get somewhere with it. And that we will be building here and where else, because you are eligible for the USDA funds.
So for the other, like you were talking about needing volunteers, do we have projects coming up? That you know you're going to need local volunteers, or is there where they can help recruit? I mean, it's new year when we know when?
There's definitely a ramp coming.
Our ramp. Our quote-unquote ramp, yeah, he just, he has been here now being a week ago or so to measure out a ramp, and we put ramps in. Rain and shine, we're like post office, we put them in the snow, so. That's coming up. My plan had been, once we had finalized the date, to just let city council know, so that, you know, if you want to stop buying dick holes, you're welcome.
As long as you let us know, we're more than happy to help.
And there are other two roofs coming. Really soon as well, but yeah, we'll let you know those dates as well, these are simple, straight, one-story houses, we don't get on two-story roofs, we contract those out, but so. Yeah, we'll let you know.
Yeah.
Just one question, you mentioned that there's a cleanup in Battle Creek for the spring. Is there anything or any thoughts regarding cleanup in Albion? A lot of the students are still here.
I think we're going to do it in the fall.
Until the fall.
Oh, well, I guess I'm open to anything, but it was in the back of my mind that it's tied some out of football. Season, maybe we recruit people and what, football season, football's Saturday afternoons, I assume, Derek? Yeah.
To do it in the spring, if we had projects or at least a time and date, you know.
Yeah, we're hoping the college. College champ or. Sets that up, but next year, we're going to change it to whenever.
Okay.
Either spring or fall, because I don't like being outside when it's a hundred degrees.
And what is the ages of the individuals?
For the cleanup, I think twelve or fourteen and up, I mean, but for ramps and roofs and everything else, we've stuck eighteen and above.
Liability.
All right, that's what I wanted to know, because we talked to you about, I think it was about a year ago.
So when we. When we're building houses here, hopefully we're building houses here soon, the kids won't have to follow our rules, they'll have to follow Marshall Public Schools, and I don't know what they are, they are much more lenient. With a career center in Battle Creek, so I don't know if it's the same. Type of thing, but we could get sixteen-year-olds. Building here.
Councilman Williams?
Yeah, thank you, sir. The youth bill, when do you guys plan on kicking that off?
Well, we were just talking about it today, I haven't met with.
And they haven't started.
I haven't met with any of the other groups involved yet, but school season, hopefully, whether that's school season this fall or.
Got you. Also, I'll, I'll share out a lot of the volunteers, that you guys need volunteers through my newsletter, and hopefully we all do as well, so we can get the word out there.
Simple volunteer request form on our website at vc.org.
Okay.
And like Scott said, you can, once a year. Once a week, whatever, it's, we, so our construction manager on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, which are workdays, he's, you know, everyone at Molesian, here's where we're going to be, it's up to you if you want to show up for that.
Gotcha.
Well, thank you both so much for being here. Next, we have Alphet here. Talk about our flag retirement ceremony stuff.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, this evening I am representing the American Legion Post fifty-five of Albion. I want to make this short and simple. Number one, thank you for your time, I do appreciate. With the permission of this council and the city manager, the American Legion Post fifty-five will be performing an American flag retirement ceremony at Riverside Cemetery. On Flag Day, which is June fourteenth, and that will be held at six P M. This will be a ceremony that's been approved by the American Legion for many years, and performed at many locations around the country on every Flag Day. Our posts did perform this in the past. For reasons unknown, it was a discontinued practice, I don't know why, I've even been going through our old records and can't find out why they stopped it. But now we do wish to revive the service. And we want to bring this back to Albion once again, and hopefully we'll be doing this annually. Now, of course, this is a program that is open to the public, we do encourage all residents of Albion to come out and witness the proper retirement of our nation's standard. And please, we do ask that all parents would bring their children along and consider this a learning experience. And knowing also that we do. Offer flag etiquette ceremonies, our services, and we also offer flag ceremonies. At schools and civic organizations and like that, to teach people the proper raising and lowering and use of the American flag. But this will be in June, I know it's a little ahead of time, but don't wait for the last dollar. Any questions?
We'll make sure to put it on our calendars.
Wasn't that so?
All right, next, we have a representative from the Fountain Clinic and Marshall, Ms. MJ. Fire.
Thank you. I'm going to hand out our annual report along with some of our postcards. You will notice, you'll know your name on the back of our annual report, that on our, is one of our boards. So. I'm transparency, Vivian Davis is on our board, and we are most, most appreciative of that. Thank you for having me, I know you have a long evening ahead, but Vivian thought maybe it'd be a good idea, and I, and I think she's absolutely right to kind of bring. The Fountain Clinic front and center, and to start here with the city council. The Fountain Clinic is located in Marshall, it was started thirty-one years ago. It was the idea of one of our physicians, Dr. James Maher, who is still our medical director, and his idea was to start a clinic. For folks that were low income and uninsured. Where doctors would volunteer two hours of their time to see these folks in a clinic setting. So he gathered about five of us together, I was working at Oaklawn at the time, so a worker, gathered myself, several nurses. A couple of community people, and presented his idea in his waiting room, and we thought, oh, that's pretty good, and I'm thinking, well, Bill Clinton looks like he's going to get elected in nineteen ninety-two, so. And he had a national health program on his, so this will be a two-year gig and will be done, well. It didn't happen, and here we are in two thousand twenty-three, and we still have a need at Fountain Clinic. Basically, what we do is we offer primary medical and dental care to low-income uninsured, and by low income, I mean two hundred and fifty percent of the poverty level. That's about two thousand for a single individual, and about twenty-five hundred for a family of two, and then it goes up from there. We have, as you'll see in the report, we had about seven hundred and fifty individual patients for two thousand twenty-two, for a total of twenty-two hundred. Visits at our clinic, so it is busy. Medical was the biggest program, but that, because of the Affordable Health Care Act, and so many people getting onto Medicaid, particularly during the pandemic. Dental has become an even bigger program in our clinic. We have a hygienist that does cleanings and screenings for five dollars. If you have additional. Dental problems, which most people do, then you're referred to a dentist that's cooperating with us and working with us. We ask that you pay twenty-five dollars per procedure, and then we pay the rest, and the dentist usually charges us about forty percent of his going rate. So it's a great program for anyone who does not have dental, and I'll get on my soapbox a little bit and say, you know, dentists. Very often pushed to the side because it's expensive. And I'll get on my soapbox a little bit and say, you know, dentists very often pushed to the side because it's expensive. And if you're trying, if you're really having to stretch your dollars, it's the, it's the first thing in your medical program that you're going to give up. But honestly, you can't have a healthy body without a healthy mouth. So we really, really strive at, at the clinic to get as many folks as we can into this program that need help. The second part of our program is, we are also the fiduciaries for the senior millage program, both dental and the prescription. Our seniors in this county are so lucky that that, that millage passed, I think it, the first one was in nineties, nineteen ninety-six. Because it has helped so many seniors, particularly with food insecurity, um legal aid. Uh housing repairs, and the big one right now is dental. So if you know of anyone, and I, that's why I closed, closed those cards with the annual report, if you know of anyone that needs help. Please have them call us. We have, we have our uh. Our person, our senior millage specialist, Mo Marshall, who is excellent. And can usually screen them over the phone and get a lot of the applications to them over the phone. In addition to seeing patients um five days a week from eight to four, we've also do a flu shack clinic once a year. We uh do free blood pressure clinic first Friday of every month, and that's open to everyone from nine to eleven. And starting this week, we're going to start doing blood pressures at Heritage Commons, the senior center in uh Marshall from. Eleven to one, the second Friday of every month. So um and this, oh, since January of two thousand twenty-one. We've also done about four hundred COVID vaccines, which I'm pretty proud of. We're trying to keep our community healthy. So, um if you know of anyone that needs help. And e- even if you're not quite sure, please have them call us. We still have capacity to help folks. We have doctors that volunteer to come into the clinic as well as our paid staff. So um they, they're, they get excellent care. It's really a very nice clinic that was given to, well, we bought from Dr. Burris. Who made it possible for us to buy it, and if. I always tell folks, it's two blocks from Oaklawn, but next door to Pastrami Joe's, and so everybody was out of buying, so. So, any questions about our clinic, or any questions of me at all?
So MJ, are there any type of transportation um options for people that may need to get to Marshall?
If they can, if they can take the commuter between, that runs between Marshall and Albion. And we've got, we've got vouchers, or we can help with that if that's, that's an issue. So be sure and tell them that if, if that's, that's a problem.
Marshall connector, yeah.
Yeah.
We have any questions about services? For how to get connected? So this is great information.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here with us. Thank you so much. And next, uh even though he's not on the agenda, we are gonna bring up our newest hire, Mr. Mitchell A. Van. Make up a floor and yours, uh introduce yourself to those whoever is watching.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Uh afternoon, good evening. Uh my name is Mitchell Avant, A. Van. Um I am an Albion native, born and raised here, um grew up in four H. Uh spent a lot of time with Sherry Grace, who some of you or all of you may know. Um went to MSU and then um went to Western for my masters. Uh have got about eight to ten years of H R experience in both the public and private sector, and um I saw this position became available. Back in, I think, August, and I said, hey, I'm living here in town. Um I wanna learn more about um city government. And so I applied, and it was a quick process, and so um so far it's been great. Um I love learning about what the council does. Um I love being able to stay here and be involved, and um I'm part of the four H generational force group. Me and my councilman Williams, we um participate with that group. And so um look forward to just learning more about the union contracts that we have before us. Um the city of Albion's team members, the fifty-four or so staff members that do a great job in keeping the city alive and thriving. Um and just um, you know, providing my expertise and, and my knowledge that I've acquired, and also I'm here to learn. I don't know everything, but. I'm willing to learn from you all, and look forward to uh many years. You guys have a great um retirement health savings plan, so. Get those contributions and stay here uh for twenty-five, thirty years and retire here, it would be great. So um thanks for having me. Um the department has, I've been very um nice and easy to work with. I'm looking forward to. Just creating some efficiencies and process improvements and bringing my knowledge that I've acquired over the years to here, and um. It's, it's been great so far, so thank you all.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Straven?
And I have my wife here, Leah Avant, she's here to support me, so um she, she also moved back here when we decided to come back to Albion and. Um we re-root ourselves here, and so um she's part of my support team, and I'm thankful for her.
Leah, are you an Albion native? Okay, awesome.
We're graduating class.
Two thousand and three, both of us.
We would like to say welcome.
Welcome.
To you, welcome home.
Oh, I do have a question, man. What precinct did you and your wife grow up in? Um I grew up in precinct one. Councilman, Councilman Williams and I have been very good friends for a long time, and we grew up um in the. The link, uh he grew up in Broadwell Housing, and I grew up in the Lincolnshire um projects or housing, lower, lower income housing complex. Yes, and so um through that experience, I learned a great deal about leadership. Um I'm very outspoken, just due to the teachings I got young, when it comes to injustices, we were taught to fight up, fight for ourselves. Being about this, we were taught to fight for people in our community and give them opportunity and, and, and access to different resources, so. Um that's what led me into human resources, really identifying, okay, what do people need to know that they don't, right? How to apply for college, how to apply for financial aid. Um what does taxes mean, how to get a house, all of these things um I had to learn on my own. Um and so I looked to teach other people those things that I've acquired just through my education and experience, and so. Human resources is ideal for me, because when people come in, they have an issue, or they want to learn something, or wanna know what's available, and so my job is to do all the backfinding and researching. And get them what they need, and so that's what I enjoy doing.
Alright, thank you.
I am thankful that you decided to come back home and to give us your experience, your knowledge. Um and to be a part of growing the next generation.
Thank you.
Uh yeah, it's, you know, like we were saying, the next generation of four H, we, we have a lot to do in regards to impacting you.
And I have an open, thanks, Mayor, I have an open-door policy, so if you know of anyone that's interested in employment. Um I have applications on my desk now to sort through, and so um you know, very approachable, open-door policy, want the help. I mean, that's just kind of how I approach things, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We would like to say thank you to Councilmember Williams for the loaded question.
Uh yes, thank you so much. Uh I just wanna say thank you for applying. Um. Thank you for uh your expertise and bringing them to the city. Um we would like to know, what precinct do you reside in now?
Well, precinct four.
Thank you so much.
I propose a motion to adjourn to close session. Public comments. Gallery uh would like to stand and address council. You may do so um at this time. Alright. Motion to adjourn to close session. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, adjourn to close session, seven thirty-eight P M. We will return.
For the TM, city clerk, can we go through take roll call for us, please?
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Branch.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Mayor's name.
Here. All right. In your packets, you have the consent calendar items, which are the January seventeenth study session minutes and the seventeenth regular session minutes. So I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next on our agenda is to approve of the settlement agreement.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Colin?
I just remind council, this is a settlement agreement that was previously discussed in post-session with our labor attorney at our last meeting.
Not what we discussed today, but the last week. City clerk, can we go?
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And Mayor's name.
Yes. In our packets, we had applications for reappointments for members who are looking to stay on their committees or boards. In the package, we had the application for Jay Loomis for zoning board, Lane Seedor for the Albion Building Authority, Jim Stewart for the DDA, Joe Rebekki for planning commission, Mark Lully for the recreation commission, Len Reed for recreation commission, and Paul Cohn for the recreation commission. Can we approve all at once, or do they need to be individual?
You can hypothetically do them all at once.
So moved.
Support.
Do we have questions or comments of the reappointments?
I'm concerned about Loomis. I was worried about Reed.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna say none, but.
She didn't hear you.
She didn't hear me.
She didn't hear you.
I said I was worried about Reed.
You don't want me to say this really, really.
Right, right.
It would just be nice if the people who were, Reed. But Reed would be, I have no choice.
You can go.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on.
Thanks, Jay, for your service. Thanks, Len, for your service.
Thank you.
Your continued.
Yeah, thank you for showing up.
I keep on training. I had no.
Right now.
So we are approving the River Trail.
We just forgot where she is.
Exactly. Yep, well, we just. We have motion to approve of the River Trail agreement.
So moved.
I will stay.
So moved. Support.
All right, you abstained. Attorney, Agnes.
So this is the agreement that we just discussed in post-session.
Questions or comments? City clerk, can we go?
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Mayor's name.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the vehicle lease for the public safety patrol car?
So moved.
Support.
Chief Kip.
As I stated earlier, this is the purchase of a new vehicle. As we purchase one a year, I was doing the math, I had to look back there. We've actually purchased eleven cars, and gee, all eleven of those cars are in service except for one, which was totaled in an accident, I think, in like 2015. We've been handing them down as they go along. One is being used by detective, one's being used by me, the one for code enforcement is a former police car, and then we have one that's unmarked that we use for the new recruits to drive back to Port of the Police Academy. And then six patrol cars that we keep that are marked that can be used for patrol purposes. So this is just to add to those. Our insurance company requires that vehicles out of patrol when they reach 120,000 miles. And so we're getting there with some of the cars that we have now. So just to continue to replace those cars, and as we do, we'll start dropping off some of these cars that I purchased when I first started, so.
Do we have any questions or comments for Chief Kip? City clerk, can we go?
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the 2023 Calhoun County Parks Millage allocation?
So moved.
Support.
City manager, Snyder?
Yes, thank you, mayor. So we received our estimated amount for our 2023 county parks millage allocation, and we are expecting to receive $25,551.27. So this millage, it requires us to submit a report noting what we used the previous year's allocation on, and then what we plan to use the upcoming allocation amount. So last year, we used our millage allocation to purchase a new mower for the Parks Department, install an ADA compliant walking path to the new Holland Park Pavilion, and place mulch around the playground area in Holland Park. The total cost was $24,843.50. For this year, we are looking with the new amenities in McIntosh Park, and then just based off some complaints or feedback from our residents, we have seventeen parks and not the biggest parks department to maintain all of those park spaces. So we're looking to hire two additional seasonal workers to help cover the work throughout the summer months. So that will be $24,360 and 20 cents in salaries and wages. And then shared in township every, so far, they have graciously passed along their allocation to be used in one of our park spaces. Last year, they redid the shovelboard courts, and then this year, they're looking to do the, redo the roofs, the little building structures within those courts. When talking with the township supervisor, he's not sure if their full amount will cover that project, so he's just asked if we will cover the remaining part of that project. He will provide me with that final estimate when he has it. So we've just built in another $2,500 to go towards that. And we will still have some remaining millage dollars available. I'm recommending that we roll those over to be combined with our 2024 allocation amount to be used for the required match for the Albion River Trail and region three project. And we did receive a $300,000 grant from MDNR for that, but we are required to provide 38% of that total project cost in a local match. So we will use the R park millage to go towards that local match. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilman French? So doing some simple arithmetic, it looks like rollover is going to be about fifteen and a half thousand. And then we're presuming we'll get roughly 22,000 again.
Yes.
Do you have a plan for the extra hundred that we're going to need?
Yes, so we're in the process of applying for additional grants. So the last River Trail project, we, a lot of that was grant funding. So working with Mark Welly, reaching out to the surrounding community foundation, so we will be doing some grant writing to secure that additional grant requirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for city manager? City clerk, can we go?
Councilmember Sharon.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor's name.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the Manor Coast Garrison engagement letter?
So moved.
Support.
City manager, say.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So council, you approved an engagement letter with our auditing firm last November to cover the years 2022 through 2024 in preparation for the upcoming USDA, the project at the wastewater treatment plant. It does require that we submit just an engagement letter from our auditor, but they require a single audit. We brought the original engagement letter that did not include that service because we did not anticipate requiring a single audit. You need a single audit if you expend more than $750,000 in federal funds. Given that the USDA is a federal program, we do anticipate spending that in 2023 and 2024. We will not need a single audit for 2022, so that is why the engagement letter just is for 2023 and 2024. So they just amended the original to include that question or that service. We are recommending approval.
Questions or comments for city manager? City clerk, can we go?
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
And Mayor's name.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the expenditure for an unmanned drone from the drug forfeiture funds?
So moved.
Support.
Deputy Chief Kurt.
Good evening. Just so everyone know, I think Chief Kip just emailed all of you the guidelines for the drug forfeiture funds. I think what could be spent on, what can't be spent on, everything. So that should be in your email boxes currently.
If we can't check.
It is 2023. So this purchase is for an unmanned drone. We're part of the counties. We're forming it right now, the drone team. It's a countywide drone team that operates under the shared departments umbrella and also under their main flying license. We currently have a officer going through the FAA pilot school right now. All the operators have to go through this FAA course, become a certified pilot through them. This will be used for crime scene investigations. The big thing is search and rescue because this drone is going to have a thermal camera on it. And so we can also use it for fire scenes, like if we have a big fire. For instance, guardian catches fire, our tower can only go so high. We'll be able to call the drone team, have them send the drone up, and then she kind of identifies areas to take care of. The big thing is, when it comes to crime scenes, the aerial photography is phenomenal to have that. We used it on one of our last homicide scenes, and it was just you can't get anything better than that because you can't get high enough and incorporate everything. And so this will be something that we're doing with the tribal police, marshal PD, and the sheriff's department. I think we're going to be talking with Emmett Township's this week at the chief's conference, but I think they might end up going with Battle Creeks has their own drone team as well. So any questions for me on that?
Okay. All right, well. City clerk, can we go?
Councilmember Reed. Yes, you've done.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And Mayor's name.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the installation and upgrade of the HVAC system for the training building for ADPS?
So moved.
Support.
Deputy Chief Kurt.
Okay, as we talked about before, this is for our training center that we're putting together. We only have that large buildings, then the casque, the main storage. There's quite a bit of space in there, and so I think Chief Kip and I were kind of sitting around taking a break from down here, looking around, wanting to probably use a little bit of space a little bit better. So we came up with having some walls put together, and the problem down there is that originally man, it was back in the early 2000s-ish when we took that building over, the ABA took it. It needed a furnace then, and it was just kind of a Band-Aid that there is water down there and a water heater for, we need to wash cars using type of water. But right now, for us to do any type of training classes in the middle of the winter, we need to have a heat system to do so. So I got three bids from local businesses, ones here in town, the other two are in the Marshall area, and one to stay within Kellon County. And I got bits from the three. I kind of went with, we had some of the best readings on Google and Yelp. And I got bits from the three. I kind of went with, we had some of the best ratings on Google and Yelp. I've used one, but one of the companies before myself, they also do a lot of work within the city of Marshall. They were having to be the lowest bid, and they also had a really good furnace to go in there, so. When I asked for the bid, I asked for. I didn't want to do another Band-Aid. We're gonna do it, we're gonna spend the money, we're gonna do it right. And so that's right emphasized from all three companies.
That ever did all the folks with the little tiny libraries from down there, because we had some sort of work down there.
There was, well, it went from the floor to the ceiling, there were so many, but I believe he did.
Are they still there?
No.
No, they're gone?
Thanks, I don't know. Someone might be there, I don't know. Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
We were really down there reading, is what happened, and then we started looking around.
City clerk, can we go?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
David.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes. Yes.
It depends on what he did with my thoughts.
Yes.
Yeah.
I like to read.
Future agenda items, any topic that we would like to have, yes, Mayor Paton Jackson.
Yes, discussion slash approval of Barnes Park.
Yeah, approval of one.
I'll bring you the information.
Oh.
That's why I was putting on your discussion slash approval, so if we don't approve then, or, you know.
I'm gonna say, I like discussion of if we're going to have another part to the retreat, or are we finished or what?
What?
The goal-setting session?
Yeah, if we're gonna have a second session.
Anything else? Yes.
And we're meeting Tuesday, right, not Monday, the twenty-first?
All right.
What, yeah?
Not Flag Day.
Oh, okay.
I will not be at the study session because I have a board meeting Tuesday.
All right.
I'll be at work.
Public comment. Anybody within chambers, like to stand and address council? You have three minutes to do so, if you would like. Anybody on?
No.
None.
Moving on. City managers report.
Yes, thank you, mayor. A copy of my report was included, just a few things to highlight. So I met with the city labor. Labor attorneys and attorney harness on Thursday, January nineteenth. We're in the process of updating our employee policy handbook, which has not been done in over twenty years, so we were very happy to get this updated. And with the times, so the updates are just about complete. It will go to the unions for them to review before coming to the city council for formal approval, so stay tuned for that. This personnel update, you all met him on Saturday, Saturday retreat, but then again, we're very happy to have Mitchell join our team. He has. Done a lot of great things already, and he's only been here for about three weeks, so we're very happy to have him as a member of the Albion team. City administration, it included myself, Director Arnold, and Jared May, our code enforcement officer. We met with St. Belt on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth for our annual business review. We kind of discussed the rental registration program. It was a great conversation. I think we're looking to have another kind of business review here in the summer. They're very happy that we invited them out to have this discussion, and they also kind of just talked about next steps in getting the registration program started here, which will begin in March. I participated in the Calhoun County State of the Community. There are a lot of great things going on in Calhoun County, not only our community, but countywide. You can find that presentation on the City of Battle Creek's YouTube page, and then I also included a link to the actual presentation, if you're free to check out. I'm happy to share that our full application to Eagle's Dam Risk Reduction Grant Program was submitted on Tuesday, January thirty-first. Hopefully, we will secure funding to do the next stage of that project. We had the feasibility study completed this past summer. One final step left to complete that study. They need to collect a few samples. The state, I believe, Eagle, they're offered to do that part of that study for us, so we're just waiting for them to work that into their schedule. But this will be the next step, so looking at designing a project, whether that be. Removal or maintenance to that, so hopefully, we will be awarded. Grant dollars to do that. I sent an email out to everybody, but just, we are working with our Albion College Ford Institute intern, Jackie Best. She is helping us with our communications and marketing. She. Process of updating our residential welcome guide. The last one was released in nineteen ninety-seven, so we are trying to get that updated. We would like to include a group photo of city council to include in that, so I sent an email, please plan to have your picture taken before the next regular council meeting, so we won't do it at the study session, but we'll do it right before our regular meeting, so. Be prepared to have your photo taken, and that is all that I have for my report.
And hopefully, Councilman French will be here in time.
We'll make sure.
It'll depend on the Semis Rory Board in Coldwell.
If not, we can do it at the end of the meeting, but just plan to have your photo taken at the next.
Councilmember Cameron?
If anyone wasn't aware, I think we all need to wish Ms. Rita a happy, I think, twenty-ninth again?
Twenty-ninth.
Very nice. Happy birthday. Is it today?
Today?
Yeah. Happy birthday to.
My nephew did that earlier today, and I have my granddog staying with me for a week, so as he heard him singing on the telephone.
I hope he sounded better.
There we go.
So as this is the first meeting in February, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that we are in Black History Month. As an individual growing up in the community of Albion, I just want to express my sincere gratitude for the African-American community and what they have done for our city of Albion. I can list so many great educators that I had as a child, mentors that worked with me. As a first-generation kid going off to college. Just so many great people that make this community great. I want to acknowledge that, just so that we don't forget why we celebrate Black History Month. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support. All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned at seventeen PM.
No, you got all the things.
Nobody, nobody searched on me today.